This evening, here to, here this evening to give the pledge and the statement are students from Lakeview Elementary School. First with the pledge, and as I call your name, please come down. Makai Powell. Makai is the son of Mr. Jason Powell and Ms. Shamika Patterson. Currently Makai is in the third grade. For activities, he likes to play football for the Cavalier Manor Raiders, and he is an avid gamer. Also Makai attends Grove Church in Portsmouth. His career aspirations include being president of the United States, a business owner, and a YouTuber.
All right.
With the statement, Asia Monet Hawkins. Asia Monet is the daughter of Mr. Sean Hawkins and Ms. Brianna Merrill. Currently Asia Monet is in the sixth, is a sixth grade honor roll student. For activities, she participates in Odyssey of the Mind, Girls on the Run, Blush Girls, and Chrome, and the Chrome Club. She is also a competitive cheerleader in the community. She likes to donate to the homeless each Sunday before attending Fourth Baptist Church. Her career aspirations include becoming an engineer because she likes to create and build things. Asia Monet also wants to be a business owner as well. I'd like to welcome you both, and at this time I also would like to recognize Dr. Bernadette Smith. Dr. Smith?
I'm right here.
Oh, I see you now. Okay. I knew where you were. Okay. All right, do you, after they finish, will you introduce the other staff members that are present?
Yes.
Okay, and, and, and the, and the parents. Will the parents please stand and be recognized at this time? Thank you all for being here. Okay. Makai?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nice presidential voice. You didn't have to tell us to stand up. We knew what to do.
Lakeview Elementary School is home to the fancy flaws Dolphins. Our Dolphin News Splash includes that last year we read over a million pages of reading. This year, we plan to read even more books. Also, our school will have a SCA this school year as well. Besides SCA, our school activities include Odyssey of the Mind, Chrome Club, Girls on the Run, Blush Girls, Gentlemen's Club, Steel Drums Club, and Bible Study Club. As a school, we had three Odyssey of the Mind teams last year. Our accomplishments include having two teams to place third in one of the problems. Also, Jasmine Scott won an Omer's Award for creativity at the Odyssey and the Mind competition. Also, our Chrome Club won an award for design of a model recreation center at a Chrome Club competition. Our other activities help us to learn and grow as individuals and students. At Lakeview Elementary, our fancy creed states, "I am a proud Lakeview Elementary Dolphin, and we are destined to be great. To achieve our best, we promise to be focused on learning, acting respectful, and never irresponsible, contributing to safety where you and I are in control. We're fancy, we're flaws, we're the Lakeview Elementary Dolphins. Thank you."
And at this time Reverend Patello is going to make a presentation.
I sort of have my family. I too am a fellow Dolphin. I attended Lakeview about three years ago. Seriously, you all did a tremendous job. Not only am I a fellow Dolphin, but I served as you passed that enrollment and at Fourth Baptist. So we're a real family. You all are bright. You are the best that Portsmouth Public Schools has to offer. I'm excited about your future. I'm even more excited about your present and things you're about to do at Lakeview. I want to thank you for coming to present to us tonight, and this is a small token of our appreciation.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good evening, Chair Parent, Vice Chair Patello, Dr. Bracy, and other invited guests. We also have our Assistant Principal, Mrs. Megan Parker, and we have Mrs. Meyer with us as well tonight representing Lakeview in addition to our parents. So thank you very much.
At this time Reverend Patello will read the mission statement.
The mission of the Portsmouth Public School Division is to engage all students in learning that will foster academic excellence and responsible citizenship.
Thank you. Board members, at this time, please make your presence known by electronic vote. Madam Clerk?
Eight members present, one member absent. Mrs. Williams is absent due to illness.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is consideration of the agenda for tonight. You have a copy, we reviewed it. What is the board's pleasure?
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Madam Clerk, roll call vote please. I mean, excuse me. Board members, electronic vote. All right, Madam Clerk?
It's shenanigans.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is her first name, and I'm proud to introduce Nyla Deans, who is our student representative, and she's going to come and give our student representative report. And let's give her a round of applause. Good evening.
Chairman Parent, Vice Chair Patello, Dr. Bracy, and members of the school board. For those watching at home, my name is Nyla Deans, and I'll be serving as this year's student representative, and I'm excited to share my report with the board tonight. Specifically, I would like to share more with you about some events that have taken place already since the beginning of the school year 2019 and 2020. So everyone will turn to the board. I have a PowerPoint that I'd like to share with you all, just showing some events that already happened. Okay, so on August 24th, we had a back to school parade on High Street in front of Norcom. All the high schools showed out, you know, they had their bands, you know, music playing, you know, it was really nice. We also had some elementary schools such as Brighton, if you can see right there at the bottom right, Brighton came, they walked, and it was really nice to see everybody come together. Oh. Close up. Try it again. Okay. The same day, during, later on that day, it was, it was the same day, at Norcom was the Ford to school. It was, it was a big turnout, it was a lot of people out there.
Yes.
So when I came, you know, we saw all the kids there playing with their parents, you know, they had their family members there. And what I thought was really interesting was all the kids that was out there and participating, and inside Norcom in the library, if you can see at the top left, there was book bags that was given to the children, and I thought that was a great way to start their new school year. You know, they got a new backpack, so I'm pretty sure they was excited about all of that. And it was nice for me because if you see in the top right, the two teachers on the right side, they were actually my elementary school teachers. So, yeah, I haven't seen them since I was in like the sixth grade. So it was real crazy to see them, but it was, it was really nice. All right, and then this shows the first day of school. It's a, I put a few pictures up there. On the left, it shows Churchline High School. Right there in the middle, it's Mr. Wilson, he's the principal at Brighton, and he also was the Assistant Principal at Norcom when I was a freshman. And then on the right, it shows some of the teachers at Norcom, you know, every morning on the first day of school, they cheer the kids on, you know, get them excited for the first day of school. And I always thought like, when I'm my first year, I was like, why is everybody out here yelling and screaming and all that? But now I see that it's really excited, they're excited for us, so you know, we should be excited also. And this shows my contact information for anyone who would like to reach out to me. My email is student.reap@portsmouth12, and my Twitter handle is PPSStudentRep, and this for anybody, you know, that would like to retweet anything that I post, or for me to, you know, keep up with everything that's going on in the school system. And if anybody has any questions or concerns, they can email me personally, and I'll try to get back to them as soon as possible. And that shows some of that. And also today, I was able to reach out to the principals. I sent them an email, and I already heard back from some of them. I just let them know that I'm open to hear any of their concerns, or if they have any events or activities that they would like me to come, or invite me to, then I'm more than welcome to come and see, you know, what they have to offer. So, and I already heard back from a couple of them also related to that.
Do you know how many book bags, did anybody know how many book bags?
I don't. I didn't. Yes, sir. Yeah.
I know there were a lot of.
Yeah, yeah, it was a lot of them.
All right, Reverend Patello?
I just want to say the PowerPoint was great.
Thank you.
And you did a, you have a great start and did an amazing job. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, the next item on the agenda, she's coming up there, is Dr. Win, and we're going to, the curriculum and instruction report.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Chairman Parent, Vice Chairman Patello, members of the board, Dr. Bracy, welcome back to another exciting school year in Portsmouth. As you can see from the extensive report that I put in your board docs, we've had a lot going on already. It's been an exciting opening, just a lot of great activities over the summer, and tonight we want to highlight the EVMS Health Sciences Academy. We had nineteen students who were able to attend this academy this past summer in July, and they had some very powerful, authentic learning experiences. And tonight, we have one of our students who's going to talk about that with us and share her, the, some of the information she learned in the activities there. But before that, we want to recognize Mr. Jamal Felton, our biology teacher from Wilson High School, who's here with us, and he helped run the camp. And we also have Ms. Laura Nelson here, who's kind of the brains behind all of this. I often, I often tease Mrs. Nelson because if you want to know how to get it done, she'll get it done. All I have to say is, well, the kids want to do this, okay, I'll get in, I'll get on it. So we want to introduce Imani Ferguson. Imani is the daughter of Lamont and Cynthia Ferguson, who are here. Her grandmother's also here, her aunt is here. She has our whole village here, so would all of you sign, stand up. Thank you. Imani's a sophomore at Norcom, and she has set her goals toward the sky. She enjoys learning new things and believes that critical thinking and problem solving of are, are of paramount importance. She is a Portsmouth native, and she is no stranger to hard work and willing to accept opportunities that will allow her to persevere toward her goal in medicine to become an OB-GYN.
All right.
During her time at the EVMS Health Sciences Academy, she learned all about diversity and disparities in public health. Quote, "I had no idea we Virginia, we in Virginia have such issues with the availability of quality healthcare. I want to be the one to help fix this." As for how we can improve the state of our community, Imani says, "I think I can help improve the disparity issues in medicine with Hampton Roads by informing other schools and communities of the problem." I welcome Imani.
Good evening, Chair Parent, Vice Chair Patello, Dr. Bracy, members of the board, and all those assembled. My name is Imani Ferguson. I'm a sophomore at IC Norcom High School, and it is my honor to speak with you this evening about science, Hampton Roads, and how EVMS Health Sciences Academy exposed PPS students to careers in healthcare. We were mentored by some amazing future healthcare professionals, while on campus, EVMS ensured we had quality mentors to not only assist in the daily mechanics, but also tell us about the real world path, world path toward medical school and other health science careers. We asked them about the classes we must take in high school, necessary volunteer experience, even their favorite music artists, and how to manage a personal life while being a full-time medical student. During my time at EVMS Summer Camp, I experienced a lot, but I'm going to tell you what I enjoyed the most was learning more about physician assistant, which I want to be when I grow up. When I was at EVMS, I did ultrasound, suturing, learning how bad vaping is, and touring CHKD. And the sad part was seeing kids in PICU and seeing babies in ICU. Thank you for the opportunities and professional development, and to the board and all those present, thank you for allowing us to speak with you about healthcare, science, Hampton Roads, and the future. Good night.
Wait just a minute because we have some board members.
We also have a short video.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
and tenth graders, to health sciences careers such as becoming a medical doctor, physician assistant, going into research, and things of that nature.
We are learning about different parts of the brain. We got to hold a real human brain, and my favorite thing was probably doing the ultrasound because we got to actually see real things and actually learn how to use the real device.
What we really hope that is these students go back to the academics of their secondary experiences, that they have a much clearer understanding of what types of classes and goals they need to achieve within those classes. So when they go back, they know they need to take that biology class, they need to take that honors chemistry class, they need to take the anatomy and physiology and sports medicine type classes. So we hope to be able to give them a clear understanding of what type of opportunities exist, and that's why we're very happy to be partnered with EVMS in this adventure.
I want to be a biochemist, or biochemical engineer specifically, which is obviously, I learned about different types of medicine and finding cures for stuff like that. And, and I think this will be useful information for me to learn in general because I still have to learn how my body works and such.
All right, so there you have it. Thank you, Imani. Are there any questions?
We do, we do. Ms. Allen?
Good evening, Imani. Number one, thank you for wanting to go into the healthcare field. As someone who's worked in healthcare for over twenty-five years, you are desperately needed and you are wanted. I often say that the cure for cancer, Alzheimer's, HIV, cancer can be found in the mind of a Portsmouth Public School student. I believe it to be true. You are destined for greatness, and thank you for what you're about to do.
Thank you. Ms. Akerson?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Chairman Parent. That, wow, Board Member Allen, that was, that was deep what you just said. But Imani, thanks so much for sharing your experience. I mean, I can only imagine wanting to go into that field and having that experience. So I just want to ask you, what was it like holding a real brain?
Um, it was nerve wracking, it felt slimy, and it was hard.
So it was, it was really real?
Yes.
Okay, and, and one more thing, can you spell your name for me?
I M A N I.
Okay, then Ferguson, it's Sanderway. Gotcha. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Good. Wait a minute. Reverend Patello?
Your first two things, first I'm going to thank Mr. Felton. You've been very active within our science department. You're also one of the teachers involved with our Jason Learning Program, and also with this, and you spend a lot of time with our students. I first want to thank you for your dedication to our students. And to this bright young lady, you have an amazing future ahead of you, and your interaction in this program is one of the reasons why I'm proud to be a Portsmouth native, and proud to be a part of Portsmouth Public Schools. You come from a dynamic family who, who has made their mark in our community, and no less, you're going to be great in your own right also. So I just thank you for coming and sharing with us, and I'm proud to be connected to you in this way.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. Wait a minute, Ms. Allen has another question.
I just wanted to say, um... We'd be remiss if we didn't acknowledge the partnership between EVMS and Portsmouth Public Schools. Too often that we hear that there are no collaborations, that we're just here. It's partnerships like this that will help our children to grow, it's partnerships like this that will increase the knowledge base that great things are happening in Portsmouth Public Schools. So we need to make sure that we acknowledge EVMS for their partnership. Ms. Nelson, thank you for always being a spirit, person spearheading where we're going next when it comes to STEM. Appreciate you.
Uh, Dr. Win, Dr. Bracy, Ms. Nelson, would it be, could, could we have a resolution that we could pass in October? Because I do like that idea that we could have a representative from EVMS to come, and we would present that, because I, I do think that, that we need to acknowledge that partnership in some way, whether it's a, a letter, a resolution, or whatever, I think it would be great if that could happen. Okay, Dr. Win, I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
Uh, your report, in September, you listed suicide prevention tips shared at building level. Then you got February, I mean, September fourteenth, eighteenth, Go See Me campaign. Tell me a little bit about what was done at the building level for suicide prevention. That seems to be a really hot topic now.
Well, I think that what they did is they did some training with the, um, there were tips shared at the building, and there was some training done with the staff.
Staff.
Just to help them identify signs and characteristics of students who might be depressed. And so part of our social emotional commitment this year is to continue to provide that type of training to staff. We had a consultant come and do trauma-informed care training with all of our administrators and folks across the division, and so that was part of our commitment to that campaign.
Okay. Thank you, I just wanted to, I just wanted to know the, whether it was faculty, or did, was it students? Did, were students involved?
It was faculty at that point, but we are working on a campaign for students.
Good.
Working on having a assembly-type program for students.
All right, hold up. Ms. Akerson?
Dr. Win, I just wanted a little bit more information on the first community event. I know it says to be announced, but can you keep us updated on the location for that? That looks interested, interesting, but what is, what is that?
Is this the one under the Office of Special Programs?
November twenty-first?
What page? Oh, first community event, a night of pre-Thanksgiving, I certainly will. That's under the Office of Youth Risk. And so as that information, as we get more information about that, we'll give you the location.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Lamb?
Thank you, Chairman Parent. Dr. Win, I just got a question, just to follow up, and just to hear some more ideas with regards to, I saw where, that there was some training with administration with trauma-informed care.
Yes.
I would like to know, what are some future plans or ideas that we're looking at doing with the, with training in trauma-informed care?
For social emotional?
Well, trauma-informed care.
Uh, we intend to have more consultants come. We intend to have the train, the train, the model. We trained all of our central office and assistant principals, principals, and specialists this summer with a consultant there, and we continue, we want to continue to have those conversations within our buildings and have that as a focus as we move forward. There were a lot of good things that came out of that training. We're looking for other specialists that can come and continue to provide training to our staff as well.
And then I was going to say, and then, and then eventually?
To the teachers.
This is going to get into the classroom, into?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay.
The purpose in training all of the administrators was to make sure that they fully understand what it looks like so that they can champion that within their buildings and provide that same professional development for their staff.
Right, because this is something in and of itself that's just not a one-shot, two-shot, three, I mean, this is
No, sir.
Model of three years or so, so, thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, the next, the next item on the agenda is a presentation, United Way of Southampton Roads, Mr. Kenny Burchard.
Good evening, Chair Parent. Good evening, Vice Chair Patello, and Dr. Bracy, and the rest of the members of the council. It's wonderful, of the board, it's wonderful to be here with you tonight. So much good news and wonderful things being reported, and I just want to add to that. My name is Kenny Burchard, and I'm the Vice President of Resource Development at the United Way of Southampton Roads. I'm here with my colleague, Matty Fitzgerald, and we are here to, even though your campaign for this year kicks off in October, we're here to celebrate your success in last year's campaign and to give you a little report on it. I just want to say, on behalf of the United Way and all of the partners in this community that we work with, thank you to Portsmouth Public Schools for all that you do. We count on you to educate our children, the next generation of community leaders, some of whom we met here tonight, and we see how you go above and beyond for your students. We hear it with our, our ears and see it with our eyes. You buy school supplies, you give students rides, you offer hugs and words of wisdom, but you do much more than that for our community. Last year, through the generous efforts of your teachers and students and all that you donated, Portsmouth Public Schools raised a total of thirty-four thousand, three hundred and fifteen dollars. You are shaping tomorrow's good citizens, you're changing lives today, whether it's through the funding of Weekend Backpacks to feed students in needs, a Night of Shelter for a homeless veteran, a Student Needs Fund that addresses the small but frequent barriers to success for children, or even a hot meal delivered to a senior's home. Lives are being changed by your generosity, the generosity of your faculty, your staff, and your students, and on behalf of all the individuals and families assisted by all of you, we just came to say thank you. Thank you. If you have any questions or concerns, talk to Matty. We want to present you with, with a plaque, a thank you plaque, that, it says, "Thank you for supporting our community through the 2018-2019 campaign, thirty-four thousand, three hundred and fifteen dollars Portsmouth City Public Schools." And if you'd like a photo, we'll pose for one with you.
We'd love it. We'd love it. Okay.
We can get a little bit closer. There we go. All right, United Way on three, one, two, three.
United Way!
Perfect, thank you.
Great. Good evening Chairman Parent, Vice Chairman Patello, and members of the board. Tonight for your consideration is a resolution in support of our military-connected families and the work in our schools to meet the needs of our military-connected students. If approved tonight, we will forward this resolution to the Virginia Department of Education as we, uh, and for future applications with the VDOE Purple Star designation. So Portsmouth Public Schools Support of Military Connected Families Resolution. Whereas the Commonwealth is home to more than seventy thousand school-aged military-connected children, and whereas throughout its twenty-three schools and centers, Portsmouth Public Schools has five percent of its student population that is military-connected, and as such, works closely with liaison officers from the local military installations to provide supports for students' unique needs. And whereas the Division will be partnering with Norfolk Naval Shipyard to host the NNSY STEM Workshop for fifth grade students this November in order to support military families and highlight the rich possibilities of STEM careers in the military. And whereas nationally, November is recognized as Military Family Month and April is recognized as the month of the military child, be it resolved that the Portsmouth City School Board shows its support for military-connected students and families within the Division and commits to furthering opportunities to celebrate and honor the contributions of students from military families, and be it finally resolved that this resolution be made a part of the School Board's official minutes and signed by the Honorable Members of the Portsmouth City School Board.
Your approval, second?
Motion's been made, and second, any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Board members, please let your preference be known by electronic vote. Madam Clerk?
It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I think, wait a minute, we had Ms. Akerson?
Hi Laura.
Hi.
Um, quick question, since it is gonna be Military Appreciation Month, I don't think we ever did this before, is there a way we can get a collage of parents and students and maybe get everyone together and just like hear like their individual stories? I know you're really good with that.
Sure.
And just, and just do something like that, um, to honor the parents, um, for their, for their service.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a presentation, resolution acknowledging bullying, uh, bullying Prevention Month. Dr. Amani?
Thank you Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Bracy. This is a certificate of recognition. By virtue of the authority vested in the Constitution of Virginia and the Governor of the Commonwealth of Virginia, there is hereby officially recognized Virginia School Boards Association Bullying Prevention Month. Whereas school bullying has become an increasingly significant problem in the United States and Virginia, and whereas over twenty percent of youth in the United States are estimated to be involved in bullying each year, either as a bully or a victim, and whereas the bully, bullying can assume many forms, including verbal, physical, and in cyberspace, and can happen on or off school grounds, and whereas it is important for Virginia parents, students, teachers, and school administrators to be aware of bullying and to encourage discussions of the problem as a school community. And whereas the Virginia School Boards Association has developed a model policy on anti-bullying to encourage positive behaviors and to eliminate bullying behaviors, now therefore I, Ralph S. Norlem, do hereby recognize October twenty-nineteen as Virginia School Boards Association Bullying Prevention Month in our Commonwealth of Virginia. And I call this observance to the attention of all of our citizens.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
It's not, no, it's not a, it's not a vote.
I don't think it's...
It's not a vote.
It's a presentation.
Okay, they better set that one. We have more than...
That's right. We're just receiving a different, okay, there we go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I do have one question.
All right, you may ask a question. Yes.
Unnecessarily for you, Dr. Amani, but thank you.
Okay.
Um, our first student representative, who was instrumental in creating our bully policy, can we invite her back to one of our meetings in October for, um, pictures?
She's in college, but I don't know where, where is she? O D U? I think it'd be great to reach out to her.
Okay, thank you.
That's a very good, very good, oh, he's getting ready to reach out to her now. Uh, Mr. Lamb?
Yes. Thank you Chairman Parent, and I, I was just curious, just sitting and listening to the, um, the resolution from, from the Governor and so forth. And with regards to absolutely agree that bullying is a significant, serious problem uh, across the United States, I'm curious to know, is there a way, a way that we could find out if, because we did a lot of things last year, with the student representative and so forth.
Right.
If what we did, is there a way to find out if that had or made an impact on lowering, um, incidences of bullying in our schools here in Portsmouth Public Schools? Is there a way to find that out or, or not? Thank you.
Is that on the, Dr. Nottingham, Mr. Nottingham, is that on the, is that on the report we send to the state? Yes, it is. Could you get, get that information for us? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Heinz? Oh, you're, all right.
Not a problem.
Next item on the agenda is consideration of the minutes for August the ninth and tenth twenty-nineteen, August fifteenth twenty-nineteen. What is the board's pleasure? Motion's been made.
Second.
And second, any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Board members, please let your voice be known by electronic vote. Madam Clerk?
Seven yes votes, one abstention, it passes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yeah. I went ahead and did the abstentions since I was not available at those dates, so...
Got you. Thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda is the discussion, public comment, non-agenda items. Madam Clerk, do we have speakers?
Yes.
Thank you.
The Portsmouth City School Board is always interested in hearing from the citizens of its community. If you have registered to speak prior to this meeting, the clerk recall your name when it is your turn to address the school board. If you have not registered prior to the meeting, you may be given an opportunity to speak by the chairman after the first group has been called by the clerk. When speaking, please keep your comments focused on issues that are of general interest to the school division and the community. This public comments period is for non-agenda items only. Due to the length of our meetings, the school board requires that you keep your comments to five minutes. An additional few minutes may be granted by the chairman.
Hi, my name is Peggy Comback, and I'm here to talk to you regarding the overcrowding of Churchland Elementary. I am a retired employee of Portsmouth Public Schools who happened to work at Churchland Academy for over eleven years. Excuse me, my mother is killing me.
I know.
And I am a daycare provider for my grandchildren. When I heard about this, I tried to go to, attend the retreat regarding this issue, but apparently you finished before lunch. I have been doing some research regarding the overcrowding. For over eight years, Churchland Elementary has had over eight hundred students, while other schools have seen a decrease. After looking over the suggestions that were made at the conference, I would like to give you my suggestion. The first option listed was portables. While this would work, there is a price tag of one point two million dollars over five years, and it's taken away money that the schools desperately need. I will get back to option two. Option three, listed the rezoning district-wide. While this would probably work, you would should wait until you opened the new middle school and then use a consultant to do the division. Option four listed the tri-campus model. Moving elementary students to three different schools and th, and different grade levels such as K to two, three, four, five, six, is difficult for parents who want to keep their children together. We are not just the public schools, we are Portsmouth, who want to keep neighborhood schools. And yes, there would be a cost incurred regarding the buses, who would have to do the repeated same route in the neighborhoods picking up the students at the same household. Back to option two, rezoning of Churchland Schools would be logical, but you wouldn't need to use a consultant due charges of fee. My suggestion is to go back to the original division between Churchland Elementary and Churchland Academy. The railroad track that ran parallel to West Norfolk Road divided the schools. Everything that was south of the tracks would go to Churchland Elementary. North Siesta Gardens and Hebby Heights would go to Churchland Academy. I know some adjustments would need to be made as the final school enrollment count is taken on September thirtieth, would need to be checked. Then check the number of students who live on those addresses of those sections would need to be taken into account. Also, at one time, the students who lived at the apartments by Churchland High School were zoned for Churchland Elementary. Once this is taken into account, I think you would see a reduction at Churchland Elementary. You need to address these concerns sooner rather than later so that the parents in these sections can decide what they want to do for their children. The beginning of school was rather hectic this year, and parents are now deciding whether to put their children in private schools or homeschooling for next year. Another loss for Portsmouth Public Schools. The decision of the board need to be taken place in January, so adjustments can be made. Meetings in those affected areas would need to be addressed. Don't make the same mistakes the administration did this year and wait till last minute to do adjustments. Children are not a number, but the future of the city, and what you decide will shape the outcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Latasha Tinsley?
Excuse me, Ms. Comback, can, can we get a copy of that? Would you leave a copy with the clerk, please? Thank you. Madam Clerk, the next speaker? Oh, I'm sorry.
Hey. Good evening Chairman Parent, Vice Chair Patello, Dr. Bracy, and board members. We always say pray for families after a disaster happens at school, or pray for things that are happening, um, after they happen. But why not pray before to cancel out the evil deeds? We are one nation under God. We need God everywhere, even in the school. I am here to propose that prayer should be put back in school. I am aware of laws and freedom of religion. That is why I'm proposing that it be an optional choice if they want to join in. Maybe five to ten minutes before school, children and staff should have, they should be able to pray to ensure that they have a safe and joyful school day. Also, another option is to have a prayer over the announcements every day. We have a moment of silence, but it's time to open our mouths and start praying. Prayer is powerful and it will bring about change. And it doesn't cost anything out of you guys' budget. I'm just asking for you to have an open mind and understand that we as a city, we have tried everything and still getting the same result. Let's try something different, and putting prayer back in school is the answer. It will make a difference. Thank you.
Thank you, and I would just like to say that, uh, when I first got on this board, one of the things that I wanted to do as a board member is to try to do exactly what you, what you asked. But then, when we, um, we're looking at the legal aspect of having prayer in public schools, then you're opening up for a lawsuit, which, you know, the bottom line is that, I'm, I'm, bring, bring it on. I, I, as one board member, support, uh, having prayer, uh, in, in our schools. Uh, having a moment of silence is one thing, but I think that, um, you know, e, each year that some school divisions have rally around the, uh, the Black Pole, and they, kids come before school, and a lot of the churches in the Hampton Roads area is participating in that. Uh, that's one way. Uh, the other way is that, uh, some schools, divisions have Bible, Bible cl, uh, clubs where students can participate in Bible clubs. Um, the, the Good News Clubs, uh, we're trying to get one started in my church, our church in, uh, in Norfolk, is trying to get one started in, in one of the elementary schools, uh, and would be an after-school program. We, 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 we teach these values. So I concur, you know, it is not, unless Mr. Meekins calls me down, it's not unconstitutional for us to use the Bible as a, as a textbook, because the Bible is full of, of history. It's just how you, you can't indoctrinate students regarding your religious views. So, Tinsley, I support you. Uh, I'm going to be talking to the, uh, the attorney to see if, um, there is some way that, that can happen, but rest assured, um, my second time, uh, bringing it up, the bottom line was that the, um, that we would be met with a lawsuit. And, but you know what? I'm not afraid of lawsuits, but thank you very much for your bravery to come before this board, because I do believe that, uh, as a, as a Christian, that we need to stand up for our, our rights, and we do have rights.
Amen.
Mr. Lamb?
Chairman Parent, I think, uh, Ms. Tinsley, right? Yes, and she, she brought something up that I think maybe could be looked at with regards to, you know, the issues of what you had just addressed and said, you know, has the ca, the possibilities of what you had said as well, the possibilities of lawsuits and so forth. But what I did hear that was mentioned was if there was something about having an opportunity before school of five to ten minutes, um, before the school day starts, that if that was a possibility, maybe that is something that could be looked at with legal counsel a, as well, with regards to if that is something that can be allowed or afforded without it being staff-led, um, and if that would be allowable. I, I'm not sure, that's why I'm saying that, you know, that's something that would have to be addressed by legal counsel.
Okay, we will. Mr. Lamb, I mean, Ms. Reverend Patello?
Thank you. Uh, again, thank you for coming on tonight. Uh, I did want to touch on, Mr. Parent stated, there is a federally, uh, federal law passed for September the twenty-fifth, uh, that see you at the pole day where you can gather where churches come.
Right.
Uh, from all communities, but there's nothing preventing a parent from praying with their child or children or friends before school whenever they like. Uh, prayers just cannot be, uh, school division-led.
Right.
When they take place. So I say that just to say, there's nothing preventing you or any other parent from praying with your child or any other parent or child that's willing to pray before school starts.
Board members, I've got this, and I don't know how to erase it, did any of you have any other, any of you, 'cause I can't see the, uh, the comments. Okay, all right. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk?
Good evening Chair, Vice Chair, members of the School Board and the General Public. My name is Sergio O'Neill, and I reside here in this lovely city of Portsmouth. Um, first of all, I would like to say to everybody, faculty, staff, students of Portsmouth Public Schools, welcome back. Um, I wish you all a great school year. I've seen a lot of hard work being put in already, and I hope it continues. Um, one of the things that I was sitting in the back listening is, you know, one of my main topics for being here tonight is issues that need to be discussed among our students and the stuff that they are facing. Um, it's very important that that young lady brought up the power of prayer. You know, everybody, you may not, your faith is your faith, you believe what you want to believe, but at the end of the day, we have to do something. We are facing not only a teacher crisis, but we are facing a violence crisis in our schools amongst other things. We are facing a mental health crisis in our schools among our students amongst other things. We can't sit and be idle and wait until after something happens every time, day in and day out, thoughts and prayers and all, that's all fine and dandy, but as we all know, faith without works is dead. We have to be a firm believer in that, because guess what? You can pray all day, but we have to start putting the action in place, too. You know, our students have brought up several issues, our staff has brought up several issues, and it's time to start putting feet to the pavement and making stuff happen, because we can't be in the same place, like the young lady said, doing the same thing over and over again and expecting a different result. That's the definition of insanity. That's already been proven time and time again. We can't be at the same place where, you know, our students are facing crises, and all we can do is say, well, you hope things will be better. It's time for Portsmouth to be the example and start making things better through action. You know, our kids, over the summertime in Portsmouth faced a lot of tragedies, unfortunate tragedies. There was some back and forth. You can throw all the politics at it you want, but at the end of the day, those kids could care less when their friend, their brother, their sister, their cousin has been killed tragically, their parent has been killed tragically. They don't want to hear any of that. They could care less what office you're running for, what seat you hold, they want action to be done, and I believe that they deserve that. I believe that our students have to know that people actually care about the stuff that they're going through. You know, I posted a video, I shared a video the other day that was done about Sandy Hook, and what actions have been taken in the summer. And one thing the video was doing was showing that the stuff that our kids face when active shooter drills happen, or some of the things that they are being taught. Whether we agree with the messaging or not, that's a reality in our schools now. Our students and staff are facing, are facing having to do those type of drills. And I can be honest, I don't remember doing the active shooter drill when I was in school, and I'm only 32 years old. And I don't remember doing it. But now it's more common day in and day out. Can you imagine for certain schools, especially, you know, kids, schools that have toddler programs, whether they're public or private, having to take a two-and-a-half-year-old and tell them to sit down, cover their head, be on the floor, be quiet, because this is an active shooter drill? That is more traumatizing than anything on this earth for a child that small. But yet, still, that's the realities that we have to face today. So, you know, we have to go and look and see what can be done, and we have to make sure that what we are doing is paying attention. Start the conversation and then put the actions behind it. Because, you know, I think a lot of the times, you know, we kind of get stagnant sometimes when we think that things are okay, we can leave the issue alone. But we all know that the issue, there has to be continuing dialogue to prevent it from happening again, or to do our best to prevent it from happening again. We have to make sure the conversations are still going, because otherwise, guess what? We leave that door open for it to happen again, and we don't want to do that. I sat in a safety and security conference this summer where they analyzed the parking floor, the Sandy Hook incident, and I can guarantee you that that's one of the things that me, as a parent, more than anything else, one of the hardest things I've ever had to sit through. Just to see the response or the lack thereof, and some of the stuff that could have been prevented from happening that was not. So, I would encourage all of you to take the time to make sure we're paying attention and putting the actions behind the words. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clark, do we have any other speakers?
No, sir.
Do we have any, do we have anyone that would like to address the board on any issue tonight? Hearing none, thank you. Next item is public comment. Oh, okay.
I just had a quick question.
If you state your name.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Shakema McCollum. I'm at Kai's Pals Mall. Well, I wanted to address something more than ask a question. Suicide in Portsmouth, I do a lot of volunteer work with lower-income kids, and suicide is the second killer of all kids from 10 to 24.
It is.
And I notice in the schools here in Portsmouth, we really don't address it. It's almost like mental health is something we kind of talk about, pass out a flyer, give the parents, like, you know, notes in their backpacks, but I feel like we should do more because a lot of kids go home here, they're hungry, they don't have, they're a single-parent household, be it mother or father, they don't have some type of faith or activity that can keep them busy because their parents can't afford it, or vouchers are not provided for them to play sports or go to different activities. And I just wanted to see what you guys would do to help bring, I guess, more therapists, more student counselors, that's another option, where we train students that, from grades 12 through college option, to come to talk to little kids and be like a mentor to them, and like on a weekly basis and get them some kind of credit or initiative to want to do this program. Because the kids need people, and I'm only one person, but I have 40 babies, if you get my gist. But I just wanted to see what y'all could do to help me, to help these kids, because the worst feeling in the world. I'm a suicide victim, and I'm a survivor. I was 15 years old, and I took a whole bunch of pills, but God had another plan for me, so I'm still here. But my worry is, my son, his friends, his football team, like, there are kids that address things with me, and I'm like, why you don't have help? Like, there's nowhere for the parent to go. So, I just didn't know if we can do something as a community, as a school board. I brought it up to the City Board, I bring it up everywhere, because it's very important to me, so.
And that's why we brought it up to Dr. Nguyen, because we do need to address it, because I've lost people within my own church, 15-year-old. I mean, no one knew, went home and ended his life. So, it is an epidemic, and it is mental illness, and it is peer pressure. It's a lot of things that are going on in our children's lives that we didn't have to experience. And Dr. Nguyen is our, she's going to make sure that that is addressed. It's already started in the schools, but we need to make sure guidance, counselors, and look for kids who are seemingly to have some issues that we can do, see what we can do for them to help them. You're exactly right, and I do admire you for coming before this board, and God bless you. See, God had, he had a different path for you, and that's great. Thank you for sharing your testimony.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, Mr. Lamb?
Yes, thank you, Chairman Parent, and thank you for coming forward and speaking so honestly. You know, some of the things that we look at anymore, and I know Sarah, she is also a public school teacher as well, I can honestly say that even in the last five years that I've been in the classroom, the students, they just seem to be coming to school with more and more, and when you look at behavior, it seems to be incrementally more aggressive, you know, aggressive, there's more of it. And again, that's why, in many ways, I like the question, what are we doing or what we're addressing? That's why I was glad to hear from Dr. Nguyen with regards to the training about trauma-informed, and that that was going to be moving forward, because when you look at this, second, you know, the suicide rate being the second highest, you know, people don't wake up in the morning and decide to commit suicide because life is good. You know, I have presented where, when you have the ACES study, Adverse Childhood Experiences, and anyone that scores a four or more on that, and 20% of our population in the United States of schoolchildren has a score like that. And so, when you start adding things like therapists and mental health more in place, there's school divisions across the nation that has seen decreases of 60% in violence and so forth. But I do think that somewhere down the line here, and maybe we could become the leader in it, I don't know, and I don't profess to know the answers to everything, but I think school has changed so much over the years, from moving to standardized testing to lack of SEL, social emotional learning, to lack of recess and play, and all of these things are important, that school in the future is going to have to look different than what it is today and what it was 20 years ago. And I think in many ways, we're going to have to ask the hard questions of what is education and what that looks like with kids or students in general today. And that might just mean that we are adding more mental health professionals in our schools. I don't know, but I think it's a valid question. I'm glad we're starting to look at this even more. And again, thank you for coming forward and speaking.
Ms. Hines?
Thank you, Chair. I wanted to go back to the first speaker about Churchland Elementary. We were presented with those four, and we have yet had further discussion about them in the board. I know that I have requested and asked that something be in place for the beginning of next school year, so I would just say pay attention to the agendas as they're published, because before anything happens, we do have to take action on it and make a decision. And it was very clear at the retreat that we have something in place for next year so that we are not constantly chasing a rabbit down the rabbit hole. But I do agree that something needs to be done. The question is, is what is going to be the biggest benefit for us? And I know that we mentioned the middle school, opening the middle school and doing that rezoning then, but that middle school project has been kicked back on the city's capital improvement plan, because we can't go into a debt of that sort without the city. And so, the capital improvement plan has pushed the middle school back to 2024 just for architect and design, which means opening at 27, 28, if we're lucky, if everything goes to plan. So, we know that we need to do something for next year, we know that we need to have that plan in place, and we're just waiting for more talking points to make decisions. So, it is on our brain, it is front level. So, I would just say keep the agendas handy as they are published so that you can keep up with it as well. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda is the Human Resources, Dr. Ziegler.
Good evening, Chairman Parent, Vice Chairman Patello, members of the board. You have before you my Human Resources report. I would just like to highlight a couple of things. As you see in the report, we've been able to give out quite a few grants over the summer. We had, let me see, three teachers who are qualified to receive a state grant of $2,500 for having their National Board certification, three teachers who are eligible to receive a grant of $5,000 through the Middle School Teacher Corps, and we had four teachers who are qualified to receive up to $6,000 in scholarship money to obtain full certification in early childhood education. Also, as a result of our recruiting efforts in other states, we were able to give out a moving grant of $1,000 to 10 certified teachers who joined us from other locations outside of the state of Virginia, and so we welcome all of them on board. If there's no questions about my report, you do have before you the transaction report for September, and I would ask the chair to entertain a motion to accept the transaction report as written.
Board members, what is your pleasure?
He skipped over an item.
Motion's been mailed.
He skipped over an item. Skipped over the hiring report.
I think, did you want to go?
The summer hiring report is for information and doesn't require a vote.
Right. That's for our information, and we talked about it in the early meeting. Did I have a motion? And you made a motion, and there was a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, board members, please make your preference by electronic vote. Madam Clark?
Ms. Hackinson.
Thank you.
I'm waiting for Ms. Hackinson.
Thank you.
It's unanimous.
And in the October meeting, we'll have an update on the summer, on the vacancies.
On the vacancy, yes, sir.
Okay.
It's unanimous.
Oh, Ms. Hines, I'm sorry, you're.
That's all right. Dr. Ziegler, good evening.
Good evening.
I just wanted to say Dr. Ziegler out loud for everybody to
Thank you.
...understand what I said. But I do want to say thank you for you and your staff's hard work this summer. 126 new teachers approximately for new teacher orientation, that's a big feat to undertake, and for them to be onboarded and ready to go for new teacher orientation, which is two weeks before students come back, and then they get to meet the rest of their teammates when they go to their prospective meetings. But I know what a huge undertaking it is to hire and to onboard, and so I just wanted to say thank you to you and your staff for your diligent work and to make sure that our students have high-quality teachers that are in front of them every single day. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the Budget and Planning, and before we move forward, I'd like to know if the board, if the board would like to do a consent, a vote for 11.1, 2, 3, 4, and 5, or, Mr. Falk, do we have to take each one of these individually?
That would be Mr. Meek.
Those are the largest consent vote, everyone unanimous consent.
Okay, I didn't know if we had to discuss each one of them.
Well, if there's discussion issues, then that will be separate from the vote.
Right.
It can still be discussed.
Okay.
If there's objection, considerate agenda was required to be pulled. Otherwise, if there's objection, you can vote in.
Okay, all right.
Do you need a move? Do you need?
This. All right.
Chairman, do you need a motion for that, or?
Yes, I do. I need a motion for us to have a consent.
Okay, I move that items on the agenda, 11.1 through 11.5, be moved for consent.
All right, and there's a second? Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, board members, make your preference, no? Ma'am?
Yes.
Yes, it's 11.1, 11.2, 11.3, 11.4, 11.5. Do you want me to read each of the? I don't have to read the contract. We are voting to make it consent. Yes, that is correct, and we just voted to do that. Ms. Hines?
Thank you. While we give Ms. Chamberlain a few minutes to get items ready, my question is not about any of these things that we're putting on the consent agenda. My question is about the reappropriations for grants that we have sent to City Council. I believe we started this process in March, and we sent a new one in April, and we finally sent the last one in June, and here we are at the end of September. So, Mr. Falk, if you've got a few minutes while we give Ms. Chamberlain some time, can you, you were Dr. Bracy, because I know you guys have been working with Dr. Patton and her staff, want to give any updates as to where we are with that?
Sure.
Thank you.
As you said, we started this process back last March, actually, it was late February. Obviously, went through the process, the city had questions. We sent our final resolution up to the city in June, late June, and over the summer, we had requests, more requests for information, meetings. I think we gave our last information mid-August, and we were waiting for an answer from the city as to where they were going to go. We had a meeting last Friday that, to try to figure out what the status of the grant reappropriations were. At that time, they told us that they could not accept those grant reappropriations at this point because of the timing. It was too late to reappropriate for the prior year, and so they asked us to bring a new resolution to them for grants ending as of 6/30/2019, or excuse me, as of the fiscal year ending 2019, to bring a new carryforward to them at that time. So, right now, we don't have anything that is in place to appropriate at that point.
Ms. Hines?
Thank you, Chair. So, they asked for three years, and they've thrown out two years, and they're only asking for one year. So, you've done triplicate work at this point. And I say you, but it's you and your, it's your tag-team partner. It's you and one other. It's not like the city's five- or six-person budget office. So, I'm going to say thank you for that, because I know you have that and other duties as assigned by, you know, Dr. Bracy that make us run as well. My question is going to be, with these grants that we're now looking at, are we in any shape, fashion, or form looking at having to furlough, to close, to stop programs? Because we entered into contracts, whether it be hiring contracts, service contracts, expecting this money to come back. And so, since this money hasn't come back, where are we with that? Because if we don't have the money to provide this, then we cannot provide it, or we have to dip into our own operating budget, which was not budgeted for. So, where are we with the funds that we are looking at, that we are still waiting on? Because if we've got to make tough decisions, then we need to start having those conversations now.
Right, right. No, ma'am. No ma'am, we are not in any way, shape, or form having to furlough or stop programs or anything like that. The money has been awarded by the granting award agency. So we're continuing those programs. This is mainly an appropriation of the funds that have been given to us or awarded to us by federal, state, and other agencies. So we just need to get the appropriation in order. And then we can actually work through those processes with those programs. But we're not in any way, shape, or form having to furlough or stop programs.
And I have one more question, I'm sorry, thank you. With the back and forth, are we, are we any closer to coming up with a process that's agreed upon by both parties? Because at this point, we're looking at March and we're now in October that we, that the back and forth has been. And so there's got to be a point where we can come to the table and say, okay, what is the process? Because you and your tag team partner are constantly chasing a rabbit that's, of things that are being asked. So I guess my question is not necessarily for you, but for this board. How can we get to a process that is acceptable to both sides?
And I would say to you that we have already, I've already requested of the superintendent to reschedule the liaison meeting with the city, because you're exactly right. We need to make sure that we have everything in writing and that we follow a process. Rather than sending information up, they send it back, it's not what they want. This back and forth is only hurting our instructional program. And I, that is, we had, we had a meeting scheduled for the first weekend of October that was canceled. And I'm going to, I'm asking him to contact the city manager so that it can be rescheduled. We need to sit down and we need to have it in writing. All right, what is it you want us to do? Well, follow the process and don't change the process. I agree with you. All right, next person is Mr. Lamb and then Mr. Barnes.
Yeah, thank you Chairman Parent. And again, I said my piece in the earlier meeting, and I think I made myself very clear. With regards to process and so forth, you know, I understand that we're having a question with process and whatnot. I get that. But again, the bottom line is, it's grant money, okay? And it's designated for certain things that you can only do with it. So if anything else, I'm flabbergasted with all of this. Because to me, it's clear cut and dry. The rules are already in place, policy's in place. Just look at the paperwork. That's it. But, but besides that, I wonder Chairman Parent, if there is a way that, even though I'm glad to hear that no one's going to get, there's no furlough or anything like that. But I would like to know if there is a way to track, to see exactly the amount of grant money in question? Of what programs that we have, especially instructional programs? That could very well be impacted by this, in the long run. I agree with the finding policies and procedures, but while we're doing that, you know, days are going by. So I would kind of like to get an update of what instructional programs is being affected by this amount of grant money that it should be going to. So, thank you.
Mr. Barnes?
And Chairman Parent, Mr. Barnes pushed a request to speak for me.
Oh. She broke hers.
Mr. Falk, again, why are you up here? I just wanted to address again, I guess I want to know more so of the process regarding that contract, that co-op contract with the purchase of the cars for the attendance liaisons. Again, like I said, it was, it was a, it was a sure promise made to us. And, you know, I am a little bit frustrated because maybe if we would have went with a local dealer, we would have those cars by now and we're still missing one. So was there a late payment? Did we not get it there in time? Did they not have those vehicles readily and available? Can you just walk me through what happened or what went wrong?
From, from my recollection, and I wasn't involved in the delivery as much. But from what I understand, the vendor had the cars ready for the most part. They had to deliver them and they, they did do that. But obviously, they had to get titles and get everything in order before they can give them to us. Because we don't have titles, we can't get the cars in place. Also, on our side, the other thing is that obviously, we have to get them licensed. That takes a little bit of time and all the markings and so on and so forth. We went with the best information we had. The vendor assured us that they could get the cars to us at that time. We did have the few days of the hurricane as well, which stopped some of the deliveries that were planning to move forward. Which set us back a little bit to get everything in place. So from that, that's what I know about that, that particular issue. As far as when the cars came in and why we didn't receive them immediately. But from the standpoint of the delivery schedule, had we not done it then, we would have still had to wait for an RIP and then wait for the cars to come forward. So it, it could be one way or the other. But I think the vendor did everything they could to try to get them to us in this stated deadline.
And to follow up on that, I guess what's the missing piece to the link? Is that the one car is not in the group with the other cars? So what happened with the one car?
Board members, I believe what happened on the, with all of the cars in effect was, we had asked them for a quote for these vehicles back in June. It took a while, like I said, they had the cars ready to go. It took a while for us to get the actual purchase order and all those kind of things done. The dealer actually said that he could not hold on to those cars until we, you know, he wasn't sure that we were coming, we were coming up with the money. And, and so at the time that we actually did the purchase order, those are the cars he had still left on hand.
So just to be clear, at the time, he had the cars, but not a surplus of the cars? And when we approved the contract, he had all but one of the cars? Is, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, and board members, any other questions for Mr. Falk? Moving right on. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. We got, we got, yes, we need to vote on the consent from 11.1 to 11.5. And there was a motion and a second? Ma'am? We voted as consent, that was approved. Now we're voting on, now we're doing it now. Consent, yes, right, all right. Board members?
I'd like to make the motion that we put 11.1 through 11.5 on the agenda as a consent item.
As a second?
I said I already did that.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, board members make your preference by electronic vote? Consent, right.
It's unanimous.
All right. Now, we're ready to vote on the 11.1 through 5.
Yes.
There's a.
Move for approval.
Motion's been made, second. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, board members, please let your vote be known by electronic vote. Is Mr. Barnes pushing your? I've got Mr. Barnes who wants to speak.
What's not working?
Oh, yours is not working, I'm sorry.
So my vote is a yes vote, it's shown as abstention.
You had abstention, you want to, as yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Then it's unanimous.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Now, the next item is the superintendent's monthly report, Dr. Bracy.
Thank you Chairman Parent. And just to follow up, Michaela said that she would be glad to come back. She says she'd be honored to come back to, to be around everyone. So we'll make sure that she's with us and I share with her that meeting is at West Haven. Okay. We're excited to be back. As you all know, the, the school year, we, we got off to a great start. You know, throughout my visits during the first days, we've seen a lot of great instruction that are taking place. And a lot of excitement in our buildings. We started the year on a great note. I think one of the reasons for that is, you know, we had a great in-service week. As Nyla mentioned with the, we had a week of activities prior to school beginning. Part of that being the back to, the back to school parade. Also, there was church services that were held on that Sunday following the parade. That gave a kickoff to the, to the school year. I happened to attend Grove and had an opportunity to, to speak there. Pastor Mariner gave me an opportunity to address the, address the congregation and to talk to them about the importance of school and being in school and talking about attendance. We also had a first ever pep rally. We took a different approach from our traditional convocation. And we had, held a pep rally for our staff. And they thoroughly enjoyed it. I mean, everywhere I go, I can't go to a school without them saying how much fun that they had. And that sort of gave them a good kickoff to the school year. It was very, very, very well received. And I'm sure you all have seen during that time, a lot of the traffic that we attracted on social media. And most of the board members were in attendance and participated. And actually did your own cheers out there on the, on the court.
Absolutely. They did a good job.
Yeah, they did. Even though with our great start, you know, we were, we were thrown a curve ball with the, with the hurricane. So our teachers and staff and administrators worked, worked through that to make sure that everyone was prepared for the storm. We had to close a day earlier than most of the school divisions in our region. Because the city wanted to get into IC Norcom, which was the designated shelter, a day early. So that they wouldn't have people trying to get in there late in the, late in the afternoon. So we closed Thursday and Friday. And after the storm, our operations staff did a great job going, checking the buildings to make sure that if there were leaks that they were addressed and assess any other damage that had taken place. So definitely want to give thanks to them and Mr. Whiting and, and the operations crew as well for, for what they, what they did. Moving ahead, I do want to share that, that our staff has contracted with the, with the local ad agency, Rocket Bike, which is underway to begin the new logo and branding for the school division. You remember us having conversation in regards to that? As, as the board members will remember, you know, we have the, we're redoing our district Portsmouth Public Schools logo. And we will make sure that the students are involved in that. Ms. Atkinson, before. So they, they will have a role in that. The ad, they will be attending the advisory groups that I have, the parents, the teachers, and the students. So I didn't forget, we didn't forget the importance to, because they did a lot of work with that. So we want to make sure that we take it, take a look at some of the ideas that they, that they gave us. Tonight, but before I close, I do want to share that on October 1st at 6:00 PM, the Title I informational pep parent rally will take place at Woodrow Wilson High School. And there will be live comedy as well as performances from the Spirit Enhancers Dance Team. And there will be free laptop giveaways. And parents will learn more about the programs, services, and resources available at their child's Title I school. And if you need information, 393-8392. And that concludes my report.
Now, is this Ms. Atkinson? All right.
Thank you Chairman Parent. Dr. Bracy, you knew I was coming when, when I heard that logo change. But I'm happy to hear about the new branding of Portsmouth Public Schools. I'm, I'm familiar with Rocket Bike, great company. They do great work and thanks for incorporating the students. So when you said that, it immediately brought a smile to my face.
That made you happy, didn't it?
It made me happy on the inside. Also, just, I just want to say again, kudos to the, to Dr. Bracy and your staff. Between the pep rally and, and Mr. Wilson's plane of accreditation. I mean, I don't think no other school district can top us, top us with that. So I just want to say kudos on that. And I think you said the pep rally, the Title I comedy show. I just love that we're moving in a different direction to get the parents engaged. So a lot of the community came to us and say, how can we get more parents engaged? And I know Reverend Patillo said about school board attendance. So maybe we need to do some of those type events to the school board meeting to increase our attendance as well. So, great job on that and thank you, Dr. Bracy. And, and related to the hurricane, I just want to say as a board member, safety is always a primary concern for me. So if we have to be the division that's one day earlier than the other division so our parents can prepare, so we can prepare to be a shelter, then so be it. I don't mind missing any days out of school so we can be safe. So you guys continue to do what you think is best for the school system.
Right. Thank you. Ms. Schubert? Ms. Schubert?
You said you were speaking too.
Thank you Chairman Parent. I just want to say thank you to a couple of people. In July, during the summer school months, Chiron Stiff, which is an ex-NFL player. He came to Woodrow Wilson, which was where the summer school was held. And we had an assembly and he spoke with a lot of the students there about his trials and tribulations. He's from the city of Portsmouth. And he just, you know, informed them of, you know, his way. His way is not necessarily the way of most people. And he just wanted to encourage those students who were there. So it actually touched a lot of the student athletes that were in attendance. So I just wanted to thank him really quickly for doing that for me. Also, I want to thank Gourmet Burger Bistro for allowing me to have a back to school bookbag. Give me something? Does someone say something? Oh, okay, I apologize. I was hearing stuff. For having a back to school bookbag drive. I was contacted by a few teachers in the city of Portsmouth who stated, you know, well, we do have issues with supplies. But the biggest thing is if our students don't even have a bookbag to put the supplies in, then what's the use of it? And they stated that every year, they have a vast amount of students to come to school without bookbags. And so I collected 95. I also took bookbags not only to the schools, but to guardians such as elderly parents who couldn't get out, or those who are physically unable to get to the stores. And so I just want to thank everyone who donated, whether it was money or an actual bookbag and supplies. Because it really helped out a lot. And I'm also doing it again mid-year, because we all know, and I'm speaking as a parent, that mid-year, the bookbags just kind of go from, you know, new to its nonexistence. So I'm going to make sure that I go to all the schools that contact me again. And also for anyone who knows anyone that need bookbags, any child that is in need of a bookbag, just let me know. I do have some bookbags left and I'll be more than happy to drop the bookbags off. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hines?
Dr. Bracy, I don't know, y'all can hear me regardless. It made me smile when you talked about the branding. Only because when you got here five years ago, that was one of the things this board talked about, was rebranding and remaking ourselves to make it a Portsmouth Public Schools that was yours and not inherited. So I know the first year you were here, we went through the whole public information audit and this and that and the third. And so we're finally to that branding piece, so I'm excited to see what comes out of it. So I'm excited about that, not for the student art, which I should be. And I am, don't get me wrong. But it's also, it's one of those things you can check off the list. You know, it's been a long time coming that just kind of sits there. And so that being said, the hurricane days, yes, we were off for two days. But let me reiterate, we're not making up those two days because it's built in. So while we had those two days off, we're not having to make them up. So grateful for that as well. And I would. And I would also like to have a discussion on next month's agenda about Churchland Elementary, looking at what, what the possibility is for where we need to go for next year because this is something that needs to be done. So, if we're going to look at RFPs for rezoning, if we're going to look at the paperwork for making a Tracities campus, that has to happen in a timely manner so that we have a decision by May or June so that going into the summer, that area of Portsmouth knows what to expect. And so, but I would like to add that at least to the, to the October, thank you, discussion so we can start getting that timeline in play. Thank you.
If you recall at the retreat, we put into place, we asked him to do an RFP to look at rezoning and look at this whole thing with the Churchland area.
And, and Ms. Hines, I think one of the things that you said, if we can't look at division-wide, let's at least look at the Churchland area.
Right.
Right. So, that's what, that's what we're, that's what we're focusing on.
Well, I mean, and that's fine. I just didn't remember us taking any action on it. I just remember it being a rather loud discussion.
Right. It seemed like that's what the consensus was. Let's go ahead and move forward with looking at something immediately in the Churchland area. So, that's where we are with Mr. Thomas and his department.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda is a consideration of the 2020 school board meeting dates. In the earlier meeting, we discussed having the February the 20th meeting at Churchland High School, the April 30th meeting at Brighton and on the October 22nd meeting would be at the Recreation Center to be determined. Motion's been made. Second, any discussion? Here are no discussions. Board members, please make your preference by electronic vote. Madam Clark?
It's shenanigans.
Thank you.
Punch you.
What's wrong? Oh, that's right. Her.
It's working.
Her button is not working?
It's working.
We got it.
Got it. All right. Next item is a consideration of policy IKF-R graduation requirement and we talked about that at the earlier meeting. What is the board's pleasure?
(inaudible).
Motion's been made. Second, any discussion? Basically, those of you in the audience, what we're doing is we're moving from 24 credits to what the state requires, a 22-hour credit. And then, the standard, the advanced deployment is still at 26. So, that's pretty good information. Board members, would you please make your vote by electronic vote? Madam Clark?
It's shenanigans.
All right. Last count, last thing is board comments. And woo, we lit up here. I don't know, all right, now is this Mr. Barnes? All right, Mr. Barnes.
First, I want to start off, I've been getting some concerns about our kindergarten programs. I wanted to ask a question. The question is, how old must a child be to enroll in our, in kindergarten?
How old? According to state law, they have to be five years old by September 30th.
So, my next question, and this is based off what the couple of parents that came to me said, do we have any children currently enrolled who do not meet that requirement?
We, I'm sure we do.
I'm seeing Dr. Winn doing the red thing. Yes, we do.
So, if the policy is a, is a certain date or whatever the case may be, why is there children enrolled that don't meet that requirement?
There, there are procedures that you can do as far as enrolling early.
And those kids did those procedures?
Yeah. Well, we would have to review all of that to make sure all of that is taking place.
Okay.
So, that's something that, that we could, that's something that we could do.
Okay.
Because I don't want to say anything that's not accurate at this time without reviewing and doing the research.
Okay. So, we haven't been to a school board meeting in a while because we've been off. So, I wanted to kind of talk about what's been going on. We had open houses and I was able to go to about 16 of them. Didn't get to go to all of them, Dr. Bracy.
I was getting ready, I was getting ready to applaud you. I mean, you.
But I, I did go to 16 of them.
You won the gold, you won the gold award here, I'm telling you. That's great.
Well, the thing is, is once they see me, they're, they're sending me messages and like, "You got to come here."
Right.
So, and, and we had a lot of major events going on in our schools that was making, I think they made the kids excited to go back to school with the, the bounce houses, the popcorn. I'm someone who loves popcorn, so I made sure I got me a couple of them. Also, we had our football games coming that passed recently and Churchland renewed their rivalry with Western Branch, which was right around the corner. So, I was able to attend that. Dr. Bracy was there, Clue was there. And also, I was able to attend some of the conferences that different departments had, like our food service, food services, bus drivers, our new teachers, the principals, the custodians. I was able to go out and they had a lot of major events and a lot of good things, a lot of good information that they were giving out. And I think the, they were very happy to see someone there as well. Also, I wanted to mention that we do have two new schools who are accredited, which is Churchland Middle School and Brighton Elementary School. Brighton, I had the opportunity to attend their, first day of school and they had a airplane with a banner going across letting everybody know that they were fully accredited. I thought that was very cool. I've never seen anything like that. And Dr. Bracy mentioned the pep rally, but he didn't mention his dance that was caught on camera.
That's right.
(laughing).
What dance? That wasn't me.
That's only part one. Part two is all the schools will be accredited next year and he's going to finish the dance.
Oh, yeah, he did say that.
He did say that.
And lastly, I wanted to give kudos to Ms. Nelson, or as I say, a shout-out because she always send, she always send the information weekly of what's going on, which kind of gives us a reminder of what's going on and what we, how to adjust our schedule for what we need to attend. So, I definitely appreciate that. I know I told you, but I wanted to also give you a kudos out loud for that. Thank you. That's it.
All right. Ms. Allen?
First, I'd like to say that it's, it's a tad bit concerning that we may have children that may not meet the requirement for kindergarten in our schools and I'm kind of interested in finding out how the determination is made, which children have that opportunity and which children don't have that opportunity. And since this is televised, I wouldn't want it to be someone at home saying that I wanted my child to get into kindergarten and we're told no. And then, we've just said that there are children currently in Portsmouth Public Schools that may not meet that requirement. I want to make sure that we're fair and equitable to all the children in Portsmouth Public Schools and one of the things that's important is that we follow our policy. So, I'd be interested to hear moving forward, how that determination is made and who gets to make that determination and what the criteria is for that. So, in case next year, there are people who may meet the criteria to get their children in early, they have that opportunity as well. Secondly, I want to thank the citizens of Portsmouth, as you turned out, for all of the events that transpired to the beginning of school. We had churches across the city that gave out bookbags, businesses that gave out bookbags to churches, individual board members, and a special shout-out to the Portsmouth Schools Foundation who every year has made sure that there's bookbags available for the children for the Forward to School Program. So, to Sabrina Evans and the board and the team over at the Schools Foundation, they normally have at the very least 500 bookbags, at least. So, the citizens turned out, the citizens support Portsmouth Public Schools and I want to personally make sure that I say thank you to our clergy, our businesses and our parents and our community partners for all you do to support Portsmouth Public Schools.
Thank you. Is it Mr. Barnes or Ms. Atkinson? Ms. Atkinson, okay.
Thank you Chairman Parent. Dr. Bracy, another one of my concerns and I, and I'm probably going to speak with you about this separately, is another thing that affects trauma is not eating, not having a healthy diet. And I can say anytime we go speak to a student, lunch always comes up as what can we do to change lunch or this food is not good. So, we have a high percentage of our students that's not even eating at all. So, they're not eating at school and they're not eating at home. So, what I want to see or what I want to look into, Dr. Bracy, if we can, is there some grants for Title I schools to where we can do a mock school, to where we can test a food program other than processed foods? I just want to know, is there any grants out there that, that we can implement and, like I said, do a test in one of our schools regarding the lunch?
We can, we can look into that and see what, every year at the first student advisory council meeting that I have, we always invite the food services supervisor to that meeting to speak with the students, to find out what it is that they like, what is it that they don't like, what is it that they want to see more of. And they take their recommendation seriously and they adjust the menus when, however they can. You know, we've had questions from students to say, "Why can't we have Pizza Hut in our..."
I got that.
Yeah, yeah. In our cafeterias and, you know, it's, it's a cost as far as being able to make that slice of pizza. You know, it's not, you don't get the $5 Little Caesar's pizza that you can go out to the store and get. That can't be served in, in the cafeteria. So, it costs more money to make that slice of pizza than the ones that we get from our, from our co-op. But we explore all of that with our students, but as far as a grant, we can talk so you can give me some more information on what exactly is that you're, that you're looking for and, and we can see if there's something out there that we can find.
Thank you.
Are you talking more about more organic?
Yes.
Okay. I know with pizza, I've just started, I'm not, I'm not a great pizza person, but when I do eat pizza, I eat the cauliflower crust. It's healthier and, but it costs more. Just like you said, you're not going to find, I mean, I like Pizza Hut. That's probably, I shouldn't say that, advertise it, but if I'm going to eat it, I'm going to eat it there, but they do have the cauliflower in it. But there are a lot of organic and I, we've started in our own homes, started eating more organic. It's more expensive, but it's healthier and I think we're going to have to look at that. But I, I was thinking that you were coming from a child eligible for free and reduced lunch and, and so you're, you're not looking at that. You're looking at other alternatives than what is.
Right. Shifting into less processed food, more hot food, fresh.
More organic salads and things like that.
Organic, hot foods.
Okay. All right. Ms. Hines.
Thank you. I want to wrap back around to the Churchland Elementary bit for just a second.
We're going to move on this all.
And then, I'm going to move for an adjournment, but that's not a motion. Can we at the, sometime in October have a timeline for this because I'm sure the rezoning bit is going to have to go in front of parents for this. So, if we can get a rough estimate of a timeline so that we can start working that out because probably we're going to need a separate meeting just for parents so that we can go ahead and get those dates out. And, and I understand that all of that is based on the RFP and the RFP closing date and the award date and then they have to have time for research. But if we can start talking about a, a specific timeline so that this isn't hanging over our heads, I think that would be appreciated by both of us on this board and then most of the families and the students that are affected with whatever decision that it is that we do make. So, if we can get some sort of mock timeline next month, I would, I'd like to have that discussion.
And you know, board members, that we, our, our October meeting is going to be at West Haven Elementary. So, I know that you know that, but just as a reminder.
Ms. Hines, we will, we will do that. A lot of that will be driven by whoever selected for, for the, for the, that we, that we accept, that you all accept, because those, those dates and, and schedules with meeting with the community, all of that is already built into that, that process, right?
All right, Mr. Lamb?
Thank you Chairman Parent. And I'll be, I'll be brief with my comments because a board member, Duncan Hines, said she was about to make a motion for adjournment, so I won't delay that too much. You got your keys out. I got you. What I'm about to say, I mean, I, I don't want it to be misconstrued or to leave anyone out because I think anyone that works in a, in a public school setting, from cafeteria help to a bus driver to anything, is significantly important. But my comments is geared more towards teachers. And what I mean by that is the fact that I'm glad to hear that we got 126 new teachers on, on board this year. You know, the key's going to be, we got to keep 126 new teachers going in next year. I was glad to see all the festivities that happened in August and fortunately, me being out of the country and out of the state, I tried staying up as much as I could. DeAndre was live feeding everything and so it wasn't that difficult. And I'm glad to see that Dr. Bracy has also got the, a teacher advisory committee that he still meets with as well. All of that is important and significant and I get that. At the same time though, you know, we're no different from any other school division across this nation. There's more and more teachers that leaves the profession each and every year for a multitude of reasons with that. And I would like, if we could, we, we look at this, we start having discussions on this even more of, I, I would like to see us become a leader of allowing and giving our teachers more of a voice. I know last spring, there were some issues that had came up with regards to decisions that would have been made that involved teaching staff and so forth and even some board members even asked, were teachers asked or asked for input on those things? And I know one time specifically, you know, the, the answer was in the negative with regards to if someone, if, if they were on the committee for it. So, I would like to see, and we can do this with a discussion or so forth, to see what we can do to give our teaching staff more of a voice, to be able to voice their concerns or just to add even more input, if that's, again, coming through the advisory committee or another option that I thought of too, was just like we have a student representative, that even possibly we could have a teacher representative as well. But again, allowing for a discussion to be able to provide teachers more of a voice with what's going on, you know, in, in the goings-ons each and every day. I think this would help. I think this would be novel because not too many districts think along that way. So, secondly, and this is my last point, I had made a promise early last year. I'm starting to regret that promise, that I challenged Superintendent, my friend Bracy, to a foot race. I hope he forgot about it, but I don't think he did.
He's going to beat you because he's.
Yeah, and, and that's okay. And I also owe some laps too, so for all the schools that made accreditation. So, that is something we're going to have to plan here real soon and that you can get gloating in. So, thank you very much.
Are you ready? Are you ready for him?
I'm ready, Mr. Lamb.
Take it.
I'm ready. I think Ms. Clifton reminded me of it last week when we met that, so we'll, we'll be ready.
All right, Ms. Hines, you want to make your?
Sure. Move for adjournment.
Second.
There's a motion made. Second, any discussion? Hopefully not. And we're not going to do electronic vote because we're all going to get up and take our bags and go home. See you next month.